All the meeting boarders, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're all present except for Brian Shea, who's on vacation. Did everybody get a chance to review the consent agenda?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jorgensen, second by Bell to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, first up, we have Doug Reed.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Don't have a ton of updates. We're kind of getting into a little bit of a wait period of declarations to be approved. We have finished up at least our initial damage assessments from the floods and some of the storms from June 16th moving on. So predominantly, that's obviously the northwest part of the county. Some residential properties out in Oakland with those winds that were 92, 94 miles an hour. A couple other pocket locations like that. But from the period of June 16th moving forward on this latest disaster declaration, we had about six homes with some type of effect. Twenty-three we've assessed with minor damages, nine with major, and nine properties destroyed from that. That information's been given to the state, and I have a phone call with them coming up here shortly to go over that. And then we will probably have FEMA and the state and Small Business Administration back in to go validate those damages to see about getting us included in the individual assistance side of things on that. Your county department head should be gathering damage information for that. That period is, as it relates to our road infrastructure and other things that might have been, might have been hit during this, this ongoing period, quite frankly. So far, or this latest, we have the sheriff's office and all the drainage districts that have filled out that survey and confirmed that they, they would need to be applying for some reimbursements for that for the disaster period of May 21st through 31st, which was small tornado, some high winds again, and large hail. We've got, again, the sheriff's office and all the drainage districts, at least from the county unincorporated sides, that have indicated that they need to file for public assistance on that. So I'll probably today be putting out another email to the different jurisdictions and the county department heads saying we need to get moving on some of this stuff so we can hit at least the request for public assistance deadlines on the May timeframe incidents and start getting ahead of the game for the June 16th and continuing kind of deals. And of course, you'll all be CC'd on that correspondence. Also, the governor made her announcement with those programs that I gave you a little heads up on, and it is now ready for application from people that have been impacted. They would apply for that at, at the state's website that they have stood up for that program directly to that program so we don't have to be kind of a middle, middle person on the front end. However, there will be some coordination that progress to, number one, validate that they're obviously in an impact area. Some data like that, or also start addressing some additional needs that are identified. And we're trying to gather as much of that information upfront as we can through that long-term needs assessment survey that's out there, which we're, we're receiving. I think, last check the other day, we had about 35 people that have responded to that survey. And in fact, it's, it's going well in some of the needs that I've seen on that range from, we need, you know, maybe a list of contractors that are available to, we're going to need some help with this financially, down to, I just simply need, I need help replacing our birth certificates and stuff that blew away. So, so there's some good things coming in on that that we'll be able to get out to the appropriate organizations or agencies to make contact with those folks and get that stuff out. We're still waiting to hear from the public assistance on the original April tornadoes and storms. I did last week shoot an email off to our federal legislative delegation to make some inquiries and maybe help give a little push and see what's going on with that.
No response yet.
I, I had one, one of our congressional offices called back and said that they, they made a, a direct request to FEMA headquarters, figure out what was going on with it. They got the obligatory, it's actively being reviewed, you know, as we speak. And then they, they replied back to that, that Potawatomi County has indicated, they've been told they hear something in one to two weeks, twice now, spanning a month. So they've got the message, but obviously with everything going on around the country, not that it's a, an excuse, but maybe more of a reason, they're kind of flooded at the headquarters level right now between tropical stuff and things from Canada to Mexico in the Midwest region with everything that's going on. And now you throw, and you, you throw on top of other things, you know, with the campaigns heating up and, and the, the RNC and DNC getting ready to go here. And then obviously, the stuff that we witnessed over the weekend is occupying probably administrative time, is the best way I can say it. Outside of that, we'll have a FEMA mobile disaster recovery center back in that will be positioned in Minden. Continuing disaster declaration. Right now, that is looking to potentially be the, possibly the larger meeting room over at the Veterans Services Building. If we can swing that, it'll just be a lot easier to schedule that. And outside of that, so far for April, we've had 285 registrations for FEMA assistance, 276, which have been determined that they are valid applications. And, and money is, you know, getting to the hands of people that, that have applied. So everything is running as anticipated and like we mentioned way early on before, we had three actual declarations going on. It's just never in the timing that, that we'd all like to see, but that's just the burden of the beast in government run programs, I think. So we're, we're pushing ahead forward and things are operating as they should right now, so.
And is your expectation that we'll let the July 25th expiration, or let the declaration lapse at that point?
Yeah, yeah, you know, our, we're, we're coming into a little bit of a better weather pattern to not be quite so on the ready any given hour of the day. So, so I don't see any issue with letting that, that go ahead and self expire. Everything that we're addressing now is kind of out of the emergency response kind of framework and getting into more of what FEMA would categorize as as permanent work, repairs and restoration and those kind of things, so.
Well, we'll leave you on the agenda for one more week.
Okay.
We'll let that roll off, and then you'll just have to let us know when you want to come back in and make another.
Yep, certainly. I think that, that would be appropriate at this juncture. You know, things will. Doing paperwork with FEMA and probably stand to have maybe in, in every other week, every two week kind of maybe coordination meeting or just touch point with department heads or something like that, just to make sure everybody's in a good place, has any questions, needs anything. But that can also probably be done virtually to, you know, minimize disruption to everybody's schedules and things like that would, would probably be something for consideration. The department heads meeting is, is a good venue to do those things, but quarterly obviously isn't going to cut it for right now. So maybe, maybe something set that'll be routine on a, on a every couple of week basis just to, you know, have a touch in and even, you know, even little things that'll help departments out of, you know, FEMA rep was talking to me and said that, said this, you know, just to kind of maybe share some best practices or helpful hints along the way will help minimize the work that goes into this.
Do you think, do you think the state's going to bring some people in to go through that housing programs that the governor proposed and stuff?
You know, I don't, I don't think there's, it, it hasn't been discussed in our coordination meetings with the state yet. It's, it's not something that's off the table, but I know that, that they're hiring at least one, if not multiple companies to manage that. I, and I know that there's, there's one company that's been contracted with already, I believe, that's kind of focusing on that, that, that Spencer area and those right now because I got a call from my counterpart up there this morning, trying to get some ideas. So actually, GIS is, is kind of coordinating with their GIS department up there to give them what we've done in, in this survey to kind of get them started on a, on a little bit smoother of a path as they kind of look at that because they've, they've got some significant and immediate housing needs, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna run for a while. So whether they do multiple contractors, split them up across the state to manage the program, or if it's going to be one is, is yet to been communicated, but.
Thank you.
We certainly, we certainly can shoot a warning order across their bow and say it'd be something that our leadership would like to at least have or listen to, so you can check on that.
Great. Any other questions for Doug? Thank you very much for your time this morning.
All right.
Keeping average, wheels on the bus. Matt Wyatt, Director, Planning and Development, and Maria Seek, Administrator, Public Health, Discussion and Our Decision on Funding for Furniture for New Public Health Facility. Morning, Matt.
Yeah.
Building is really looking sharp with the black.
It is. Yeah, the black panel's going on. The second floor has been painted and they're, and they're currently running all the data and fiber cables through. Cabinetry is being set into place up there. So the second floor is, I mean, when you go up there, it almost, it really looks completed other than get some flooring down on there, but the project really is coming along nicely. And we're to the point in the project where we have to order some furniture for the building. And so this has been, it was an ongoing process. We worked with a couple of different companies to try to get the best price that we could. We wound up with Endoff on there for pricing for this and spent a lot of time going through each and every room that's on the floor plan I sent along with there, giving you an idea of the furniture that would be located in those areas. The, I'll just kind of start off on the, the second floor of it. The break room furniture, of course, we just looked at the new break rooms over on, in the B wing and asked them to give us that same style of furniture that matches in there. So you will have a couple of, and that, that's the ground floor there on that one. There we go. So it's your, when you're looking at that photo there, upper right-hand corner, that's a break room. So that furniture will match the break rooms that are in the current courthouse that we have right now. Moving to the left of that is a conference room. That conference room will match the furniture that's in like your Wild Rose or the Burrow Room downstairs. It kind of has those multi-tables that you can move and configure into different ways. Even the color scheme's much the same. It'll be kind of gray tables in those rooms, black chairs. Further out then, you have your cubicle area. The cubicles, I mean, they're, they're just that, I mean, they're cubicles. So gray and white on there. That, there's a large table all the way to the left that's sitting out there. That table will actually, is drawn on over here just for the furniture purposes, but that table will actually sit over here. This storage room right there is for all the public health and WIC giveaways that they, you know, whether it's pencils, pens, sunscreens, little ice packs. They'll use that table, which is a counter height table, which the stools go underneath of it, to pack those bags all together. All of the workstations in here, everything matches through all of these offices, all of those desks. The ones with the, the ones that got the L's are more of your director management level stations and then your workstations, just with those. You can have the first one, Mitch. On this training room, I had a meeting down at the sheriff's office in their new training facility, and I really liked those tables and chairs that they had down there. So we sent the furniture people down to, that furniture will be the exact same thing that's in the sheriff's training room that they have. The chairs are a little bit wider, a little bit more stout to hold people on and desks have power out of. Another, this is another conference room up here, the WIC area. We do have like your couch and a chair. That's the lactation counseling room. Your normal workstations up through there, clinic beds. We're bringing two beds with us, but we do need two new beds, and that's in our pricing as well for this. And our nurses' workstation that's up there, along with our reception area furniture. If you've ever been to a doctor, the, any of the CHI offices, we went down to the CHI waiting room, perceptions, we found out what furniture they had and that. So the furniture's going to look much just like if you walked into CHI for those. But overall, on that, the price with installation is, it's $210,000. Now, we are getting funding from the WIC program back on this right about. Medical beds, and we would, we won't be able to receive that funding, so get the go-ahead and okay until October on that, but it was still a reimbursement to us on this $210,000 amount. So we're, we're going to try, we're trying to get as close as we can to it with funding it from our grant programs, but we have to spend the money upfront, 25% of the money, I think it is, for the down payment of it to get the furniture ordered and have it here on time for us for assembly-wise. They'll be in there installing furniture at the beginning of October. Correct. November 23rd is the official date of when they're supposed to release the building back to us. We were talking with them at the last construction meeting, and we do think that we're going to end up getting another credit back on the concrete work because the original plan was to go in there where their work trailer and everything's sitting at, pull out all of the concrete from the original building that was there. But after reviewing that concrete, along with the concrete of the parking lot there at the end, it's really in good shape. And so we're thinking that we're only going to go out to the end of the porta pots out there sitting with new concrete, so that'll be a fairly large credit back to us on that concrete side.
The other day, I, I want to go back to the, the funding part of it. You said you had $120,000 grant that will cover that part of it?
From WIC.
Okay. Total cost is 210. Where did you say that other night you might be able to come from?
We're hoping to get that from our ITS program, at least a portion of it.
And what is that?
That is your testing, treatment, and referrals. That's our STI program.
When, when that $120,000 for the grant comes in, you'll give that back, illustrate?
If the check's not made out to me, I will give it back, good.
So upfront, upfront, you need $50,000. Cover the first down payment.
$28,546.87.
Correct.
Oh, so they're, they're not, they're not, total cost is 210.
Total cost is 210. We pay the $48,000 piece of it now. We pay the residual of that after installation.
Okay, but before I get to where the rest of that money's coming from, if you look at the invoice from Endoff, it talks about the building materials for cubicle workstations in room 111. Is that wrong? Cubicles are on the second floor, right?
So that's the nurses' desk area?
Yeah.
And then the nurses are, they face each other? But they have a divider that goes in between them? It's not a full, because it's a sit-to-stand desk, it's not a full cubicle?
My understanding was the staff on the second floor will all be cubicles too, right?
That is, yeah, those are full cubicles, stationary desks, full cubicle.
And that's part, that is part of the, part of the quote?
Yes. All of this furniture. And we've done several meetings going room by room, chair by chair, end table by end table, to make sure that we have hit every piece of furniture in there. Talked about, I don't ever want to go furniture shopping again. Talked about furniture a lot lately.
So Mitch, worst-case scenario, we have to cover $90,000. Sure funds and ARPA for that?
Yeah, well, what we've allocated towards the public health building covered, and I think that was, I think the furniture cost was really included in our overall cost to start with, wasn't it?
Furniture cost was originally included in there, but then we were asked to pull it out because it was thought that it would come from gaming at the time. So it was.
So it doesn't really matter, right? Are there other funds in ARPA for that, Mitch?
Yeah, there's one available one there. I mean, there were the, the building improvement fund, one, two, it's 20.
Hopefully, we get it all back.
Hopefully, we get it all back.
What do you need from us today, Matt?
The 48, I need the ability to be able to pay the $48,546.87.
I'll do that for you, man.
Second. Man, I think you negotiated a pretty good price myself. That's a lot of furniture for, for that kind of money, so must have been added pretty hard, like you said, you know?
Thank you, yeah, it was a good process.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
And that's coming either from gaming or?
Or land fund.
Gaming or the land fund?
Or. One of the three.
Where do you want it to come from? I guess I should have been part of my motion.
Yeah.
I'll amend that to, we'll take it out of gaming for right now. And, well, adjust it when you do at the, at the end.
Thank you. Are you okay with it?
Second, congrats.
All in favor, read. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
It's on the downhill course.
Been close.
All right, next up is discussion and/or decision to approve an authorized board chair to sign CDBR-DR funding audit for contract number 19-DRMB-006. And I ask this to be included on the agenda for today because they're asking for my signature. This pertains, this came from the Iowa Economic Development, and it pertains to the 2019 flood funds that have, were in the process of receiving or working through. And this is just a notification that MAPA sent out that an audit is required based on the amount of funds, but we just need to be prepared for it. I, I think it's just a formality sent out by MAPA to let us know that we need to be keeping intentional records because an audit is going to be required.
Pam said that we had, that's, that they've sent, that's been going on for a few years now, right? So this is like the third year that we've signed this particular form here. It relates to our buyout funds from the 2019 flood that we have done. All of that information, every document that had transpired with that is uploaded into that AMA Grants Pro from the Homeland Security, from the state office, but, and that's correct, we have not been audited on it yet, but we have everything ready to go in case that we would be.
Approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Bell, second by Jorgensen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mitch, for helping with some of the research on that one.
Yeah.
All right, next up, Mark Schumaker, Executive Director, Conservation, and Jana Limerick, Director, Human Resources. Discussion and/or decision on pay for environmental education coordinator position. Good morning.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, this is for the Environmental Education Coordinator position. That position is currently at a grade 520, step six. I'd like to move that to a 521, step seven. It's more than a 5% increase, so I was advised by HR and Jana that we needed to come to the supervisors to get that approval.
Is that for Amy Johnson?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because the form we're looking at says step 521 and grade six. It doesn't say grade seven.
Right, Mark would like it to be grade seven. So the timing of it is a little complicated because we had to put a status change form on the agenda today for this Friday's paycheck so that the change can get made in the system today, so we couldn't wait a week to get a status change form on. So we can, we can correct that status change, but we had to get something on there. And so the six, I don't think would have needed approval. Mark would like the seven, which is why we're here, but we had to get a status change form on. And a couple months ago is when we brought the job to the board of supervisors, and you have already approved the 521 for the job. Now we're asking where we want the person to be.
So you're saying we'll, we'll get another one next week?
No, we would like this to be it and to amend it as needed today.
Is that money in your budget, Matt, or Mark?
Yeah, it is, Tim.
What?
It was last year. We were under budget last year, and I think our revenues exceeded what we projected too, so.
What would the, what's your main rationale for this, Mark?
Rationality is. Well, I have issues when supervisors don't make more than what, than the people that they supervise. And then also looking statewide at environmental educators, there's, I mean, there's not a lot of comparables, but there's 14 or 15 statewide, and this would put her more in that range, that average.
So this takes effect July 1st. Is it Janice's fault that it's just not getting to us or?
No, I, I drug my feet, so it's my fault.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not here for like thirty more days, so.
We have spoken to payroll, so they are expecting a change to make today. So, they're well aware.
Well, I'll make that one.
The five-twenty-one and seven?
Yep.
So, the change is the seven on the, thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Second.
Yeah, a more, motion by Jorgensen, and a second by Belt to approve pay.
I see what you're saying, Scott. So, you'll have to put through another payroll status change.
Would be interesting to amend that one today, because for it to be effective July first, to not have any back pay, it will need to go on this Friday's paycheck, which we're processing today.
Does the payroll status change require a note of review?
Not anymore.
You, you make that motion, five-twenty-one, seven.
Go with it.
Second, do you second that, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Go the other way around.
So, it's a grade five-twenty-one, step seven.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Motion by Jorgensen, second by Belt to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And it's forty-five more days.
Working days.
Five more days.
And if you throw off vacation.
I'm coming along. Well, you can be retained.
What?
You can be retained.
Do you tell me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Great. Committee appointments. I attended the MAPPA RPA meeting last week, and we kind of did a little brainstorming session on where out in the county, we need to, well, all of the counties that are in the MAPPA area, what we need to be intentional on. I think MAPPA's on the agenda to come in next week to do an update for us as well. I attended the quarterly department head meeting and the quarterly wellness committee meeting, and my biggest takeaway from both of those meetings is that we are not having any onsite blood draws for the employee wellness program. So, we really need to make sure that the employees reach out to their primary care physicians to get those appointments scheduled. And then I also met with Penny Ravlin, and we went through the state requirements to appoint her replacement in that timeline. So, we will be working through that process. Jeff, did you have any meetings that you attended? No? Pam, anything you want to add?
No, except for on the blood draw part of it, that there's going to be a fairly rigid, I shouldn't say rigid, they're gonna work really hard to make sure they get all the employees notified that this is a benefit to them, and they should be taken advantage of it. And I think Maria is putting together a, Maria, maybe Heather, putting together a pretty decent fire, and it should go to everyone's email.
All right. Got, anything you want to add? No? All right. Did anyone sign up for public comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.